Oh, I don't want to do that. Make a mistake.
It's been like that. Oh, bad easy.
I think a nameplate or something, poor girl.
I mean, no.
That's, huh?
Read it.
Yeah, I will.
On which is it?
On.
I'm not sure.
I mean, on the left side.
You will. Come on, dude.
I did not. One of the boxes.
Really? He just really just tell her. That's all.
You guys know. Twenty-six years. Yeah. If the ones on the coin say.
I was going downhill. She's like, you go right on her head.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're. Their son's.
It's one of the football players.
Yeah, he does a lot. Yeah, I've walked around. Lots of kind of tag along with this.
No kidding.
Well, congratulations. Congratulations on that. Didn't take stitches.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call the October 2nd DeSoto City Council meeting to order. Our roll call.
Lane.
Here.
Hana Michael.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Mac Moran.
Here.
Patterson. Mayor to Pierce Councilman Patterson is absent.
Okay. I would invite you all to please rise and join me at the pledge meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have approved the minutes from the September 18th City Council meeting, approved pay ordinance number 1,006. Approved quote from Lane Chris. Was this the one that was modified?
Yeah. What's the name of the?
Oh, yeah.
The new contractor.
Sergeant.
Sergeant, yeah.
Let's just, we'll just act on item C separately. Can I have a motion to? Well, let me finish running through and then we'll do the motion. All right. Item D, approved temporary use permit for the 5th Annual Fall Vendor Event. Item E, approved resolution 2,081 authorizing consumption and sale of alcohol at Riverfest Park for the Disc Golf Grand Opening and Tournament. And item F, accept easements and right-of-way for Carriage House Number 15. I would like to move item C from the consent agenda to be acted on separately.
I'll make a motion, we remove item 1C from the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as modi- as modified.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane. Hana Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Mayor Walker on 1F.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And D.
D as well.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, yeah, and D, yeah.
Okay. All right, item 1C, we got a, we got an email from Joe that we got a better bid on the well rehabilitation. So, Joe, you want to take off with that?
Yeah, so we, we had Lane come out and remove the pump. And it's been hard to find anybody else to, to do work. And so they gave us a quote to clean the well and reinstall the pump. And we'd asked for a couple quotes and didn't receive any. And given the timeframe to get it, the well done and the timing of the council meeting, we went with Lane. We did finally get a second bid from Sergeant Drilling. A company that used to be out of Nebraska, or they still are out of Nebraska, but they both have an office here in Kansas. They've done some work for us. And when Lane disembursed their office here, a lot of their folks went to Sergeant Drilling, which Doug is real happy with those folks, they've done really good work. And their cost is less than half of what Lane had quoted us. And so I thought it was worthwhile to make that change, to ask for approval of Sergeant Drilling. Now, I think it's $11,700.
Okay. Any questions from Joe on this item? Motion to accept the bid from Sergeant Drilling.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Hana Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item 2 is called a public, members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under called a public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council under called a public? All right, we'll move on. We don't have any old business, so we will go to item 4A. Received the presentation from HDR for the 95th Street Preliminary Engineering Study between Lexington and Sunflower Road.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got two individuals here from HDR to do the presentation. This is a result of the Southwest Growth Study area. And so looking at the alignment and cost, we hired HDR outside of the original study to look at what this section of 95th Street would look like and estimate the cost for construction. And I'll let the two gentlemen make the presentation.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Jay Aber with HDR. I'm joined by my colleague here, Braden Beamer, who's our municipal roadway lead in Kansas City. And just to talk through this, we've got a very short presentation here highlighting kind of where we came from, why the study's being done as part of the Southwest Growth Area Plan. And then Braden will walk through some of the elements of the design and the cost element, cost estimate. So as I know you all are well aware, because you were all involved in the process, the Southwest Growth Area. And you go to the next slide. I think, Mike, you run in this?
Yeah.
So, okay. Southwest Growth Area Plan was adopted by the council back in the summer, or spring, summer? This year anyways, earlier this year. And it included a number of elements about transportation. So in terms of public input, one of the elements that was important to the public and the landowners was roadways and mobility and generally improving the mobility through the area for all users, making it a safe and comfortable environment for people driving, walking, and biking through the area. One of those guiding principles developed for the plan was to create a walkable and well-connected development, supports mobility residents and visitors to the Southwest Growth Area. So we did some traffic modeling with that. And there was the primary growth area, which was east of Sunflower Road, and then the secondary growth area, which is predominantly outside of city limits, that's west of Sunflower Road. And with the traffic modeling for the full build-out of that primary area, this section 95th Street had just under 20,000 vehicles a day, about 18,000 vehicles a day, which was really appropriate for one-through lane in each direction approaching that limit where you might want two-through lanes or a four-lane road, but still really in that two-lane road category. Looking at that full build-out then, you can see is that, as that secondary area would, would grow and be built out, that number might go up closer to 24,000 vehicles a day between Sunflower and Lexington. And that's really more in that four-lane road category. But that could be, you know, a very long time into the future by the time the full area within the city limits is built out and then also the area west of there. So some of the recommendations for transportation, just copied here from the plan, with the primary study area full build-out, recommendation was a two-lane median divided street with the ability to expand to a four-lane median divided street, particularly east of Dilly Road. Dilly Road was the entrance to the development that could happen there. I think there was some debate whether it was actually called Dilly Road or not, but that's was what it was on the county street grid. But that's kind of the entrance to that major development. So not necessarily an exact area, but kind of east of where the, those major developments might happen. And then with the secondary study area full build-out, that recommendation was to expand that road from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. There were some graphics included in the plan. You can see on the left there is the two-lane configuration with the wider median. And on the right with that expanded to a four-lane road where that median is narrowed, but we still maintain the amenities, the sidewalks, trails on the outside and space for landscaping and streetlights. The other thing I'll mention, you know, in terms of the importance of this project is there was a marketing brochure produced in addition to the plan itself, which was really to help the property owners and land developers understand what's going on in the area, what's happening. And one of those things in that marketing brochure was mentioning that further roadway improvements were planned for the area, including 95th Street west of Lexington. So that could be something that is desirable for developers to see that road improved and important for redevelopment in the area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Braden.
Thank you, and good evening. We were asked to do a preliminary engineering study. Right there, you can see the study area. It's 95th Street between Sunflower and Lexington. And so out there now, you have a two-lane rural road with no shoulders. And so we were asked to look at what a interim typical section would look like. You can see a wide median here. After working with the city, we elected to build to the outside and work our way in. So if you go to the next slide, like, like we just saw before, this is a rendering of what that would look like. And then based on that, once the full build is necessitated by traffic, then we would have the opportunity to build to the inside. And this is what that would look like in the future, as well as, as the rendering at the Lexington and 95th Street intersection. And so if you want to skip through these, you, you have these, these are the preliminary plans. I do want to highlight that you see median breaks about every quarter mile for turnarounds. And then ultimately, when you get to the interchange, or the intersection at Lexington. And then after that, we came up with our cost estimate. It was about 13.6 million. And any questions?
All right, questions from council?
Yeah, so you're showing 120-foot right-of-way. What, what is the existing right-of-way?
I believe you all have 60 on the north already. And then it varies on the south. So right-of-way acquisition would still need to occur on the south side 95th Street.
Okay. I think on the, it would be good to show on the plan sections in some, some way, in the areas to show where right-of-way preservation or right-of-way acquisition is going to need to occur. And then if we've got the, if we've got 60-foot right-of-way on the north, I think the next thing I'd like to see is where in the, in your typical section, both the interim and then the ultimate, where are, where are utilities existing now? And if they have to be relocated, then where would they be? Where in that section would they be? Would we preserve the area for utilities to be relocated to? You're predominantly following a lot of the existing grade, but you do have some cut. So there are areas that would impact probably most all the utilities that are out there, including, well, maybe not the new gas line. I don't know how much has got built outside of the right. Did the new gas line get built within the existing right-of-way?
No, no.
Private easement.
It's in private easement.
It's outside.
Okay. So I think it'd be helpful as we use this as a tool for looking at development opportunity or development proposals coming forward, where if something's going to occur, where do those utilities need to be, need to be relocated to such that they're not impacting future construction in some ways? That'd be my hot buttons is where, where do we know where we need to do right-of-way acquisition or preservation? And what, how are we dealing with utility relocations?
So on the north side, would there be any right-of-way acquisition that needs to happen? Or is there enough there on the north side?
You would need temporary construction easements on the north side.
Temporary construction, but not permanent?
Right.
And then on the south side, how much permanent acquisition would be needed as far as south?
Um, I.
And even on Sunflower, on the north-south sections?
I don't have the number on the top of my head, but I believe if you squint, it's in the estimate, the, the square footage of assumed right-of-way for the total length of the project.
So for example, the corner, southwest corner lot on 95th and Sunflower.
Mm-hmm.
They've got, it'd be the very first.
Yeah.
Rendering. They've got.
Yeah.
Two sections of property line that would be, so how much would they be looking at acquisition?
We could, we could get you a specific number, but I don't have that number off the top of my head for that southwest corner.
Yeah, I figured you should have the existing right-of-way lines on the, on the concept plan.
Because I mean, on, on that piece of property specifically, it looks like there'd be a decent amount of acquisition required.
Yeah, we should mention that, you know, what we're working off here is county parcel data, so we don't have surveyed right-of-way lines. So it is kind of an estimate. You know, sometimes right-of-way's been dedicated and under different vehicles. So we could show the parcel lines, it's not an exact number. And I think here too, at Sunflower, there's some question, you know, what does that intersection exactly look like? Because it doesn't necessarily need to be built out fully like this. There's some different options there. You know, this kind of sets up Sunflower and 95th West of Sunflower for an easy transition in. But if there's some specific right-of-way concerns in different places, especially like right here, I think it's flexible in how that could be final design.
Okay. Anything over here? All right. Yeah, those are my, I, I think just seeing the, being able to clearly see existing and proposed right-of-way line, I think it's a good point on the utility corridors to make sure that we have guessed right as we laid things out and conveyed that our early intentions are conveyed in this drawing as well. So, good point.
Another comment not related to the 95th Street corridor, but more about, more on the overall map. We were talking about this during the Southwest Growth Plan, the numbering of the street. And there's one where, I think you're still picking up 102nd from an early version of the Southwest Growth Plan. But I think that would probably make more sense to be at about 99th Street rather than 102nd Street.
Yeah.
So it's more on the grid, it's half-section line. One of these had, had 102nd. It's that very first, the opening slide.
Out there it is.
Yeah.
You got us.
Yeah.
And we had a lot of debate about that.
That was an old one.
That's probably right out of the old presentation, right?
Version 0.1.
Okay. Well, appreciate the study. Good information. Any formal action that we need to take?
No, I don't think so. Sounds like there's a little follow-up to do.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I think probably appropriate to have staff, you know, follow through with, with, with the team and come up with a final product and get that out to the council. Here's the final product. I don't know that it needs to come back here for any formal approval.
I would think it would get incorporated in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah. Or certainly be kind of this starting point for the CIP.
Well, definitely.
With this, with this project.
Yeah. But in terms of a.
Yeah, in terms of visioning document.
It would be a comprehensive plan item.
Right. Formalize that in the, within the comp plan, so.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item B, ordinance 2668, authorizing the issuance of previously approved industrial revenue bonds and tax abatement for Prairie Fields Development Company LLC.
Yes, council, this project is complete now and at the point of the issuance of bonds. So what you have before you in ordinance 2668 is simply authorizing the issuance of those bonds that were previously approved.
Any questions for Patrick on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2668, authorizing $5.85 million in industrial revenue bonds for the Prairie Field Development at 85th Street and Kickapoo.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Hana Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item C, consider resol- consider resolution 2080, creating benefit district for a portion of Evening Star Road and approving the development agreement.
Yes, council, at the last meeting, you recall, we annexed the right-of-way from KU. So that is now part of the city. And then Dave Anderson, who's here tonight, presented to you at the last meeting the request for a benefit district to fund the extension of Evening Star Road. So the resolution 2080 forms a benefit district and approves the development agreement. The two properties that will be assessed for the cost are Geiger Ready Mix and My Store 3. Both have signed the petition. Geiger has signed the development agreement. This project is very similar to the Sunflower Benefit District for the sewer that you approved several months ago, maybe even a year ago. I can't remember exactly, but these are special obligation bonds. So if assessments were not paid, that would not be on the city's budget, that would be on the developer. So open for any questions. Staff recommends approval of resolution 2080.
Any questions for Patrick regarding resolution 2080?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2080.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Hana Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Item D, receipt presentation regarding the Countryside Farms Development.
So, sorry, Dave Anderson represents the applicant here. I did include in the packet, which is typical at this stage of incentive request, the application materials that were submitted. And then just to remind you, in our economic development policy, we have a step where the applicant simply comes before you, sort of an informal presentation, provides you information of what they are requesting and their project. You're free to give them feedback, but we won't be taking any votes on anything tonight.
Okay.
So with that.
Dave, you have the floor. I sat close because it's all night here.
Sorry to overload you. Dave Anderson, 9152 Shorewood. So, Mike, if you're running that.
Yeah, you want the map?
Yeah, that maybe, so, the old colored one's pretty good.
Okay.
So to kind of get you guys oriented with the presentation from HDR, the, this road that you see on the right, I guess, I'm looking at the right. That is maybe Dilly Road, maybe not. But that's the road they were showing up there. And, and north is to the top, and that would be 95th Street. And we, we were also shown as a little orange approach on that HDR presentation. So this is the southwest corner of that property. And Mike, if you wanted to scroll and they could see, it's a 78-acre piece. Probably that last one is okay. That yellow, yeah. And the pink.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, so that shows the yellows are 3 zoning and the top rectangle is C2. That was some time ago. So we actually come down and touched Lexington. We've not been able to work with the neighbor next door. We tried, but they may not want a road down there. So we stopped short where Mike shows. So tonight, I'm here, we're, we're ready to get this thing kind of rolling. And we would like to ask these things in the economic development incentive package, 75% tax abate, property tax abatement for 10 years, which is following the, the map that you guys have. And we'd like to do it in three phases. So that's some part of discussion I'd like to have you guys give me some feedback on. And then that would be the material sales tax exemption. It's a standard IRB request. And in, in that, we would build 27 duplexes and 12 sixplexes. We've met with, well, we've gone through planning commission, we've had preliminary plat, the site plan, and a final plat which you guys approved, and I think that's what you saw up there. We would also like to ask in the, in our application that our excise tax, when we start building the product, you pay excise tax. And we'd like to ask that that tax be put against the cost of 95th Street. I'm sure you're going to talk about how to fund it. And I'm, well, I would, I don't know. If you ask the property owners to participate, say in a, a district of some type, we'd like to apply that, ask you to let us apply that to 95th Street. We'd also like to ask for a special benefit district to construct those roads that you saw there. We're the only property owner, so as Mike or Patrick mentioned, on the Geiger one, there were two property owners, but we'll be the only ones. Yeah, there's an overall concept plan, that's kind of cool.
Yeah, that's a little better.
So the, what we're asking, and I think it's in there, is the three colors. In this three-phase approach on that, we could, it's a, currently I have a single investor, it's two sisters. But we want to chop the 27 duplexes into 17 and 10. And then another parcel would be four sixplexes and the other would be the balance of eight. And so what I'm asking is that we would have the 75%, and then maybe say, give us five years to start anything. You know, we'll start, we're going to start the 17 and the six, or eight, as soon as we can get that road built. So, but they, and then we could continue on. We'd come back for three bond allocations, I guess, is how I'd put it. So I'll stop there. Said a lot, is there any questions?
When you were just talking about those, is that?
That's it, there you go.
That's the breakup you were talking about, right?
Well, there's, no, that, that didn't get quite put together the way we were, well, wait a second. That is right, correct, that is it, yeah, sorry. That's, Kevin, that shows, councilman, that shows the red is the first 17 duplexes and then that curve contains those eight sixplexes. So we would ask to, for you to ask staff to go ahead and draw, draft something that says, as long as we start in five years, we plan to start the orange or red right-of-way, probably go right into the others. So there'd be no stopping. But if it got to, let's say, for instance, the market were to slow down, then we have, the clock is going until we, you know, we have till five years to start the next, the yellow one.
So you're asking for a five-year window to exercise all of the IRB?
Yes, that, that's, thank you for putting it together like that, yeah.
But you wouldn't, the, your first IRB would be within the first five years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then the, the following.
Would also fa- would also fall within the five somewhere. The worst case, I think, is let's, we'll start, and the worst case would be in year five, we get, and start, we have to start those others or our deals off, is what I'm saying.
Because with IRBs, you don't want to issue the bonds until your project's complete.
Right, so that's, that's another point, Patrick. We will split it like this and also we'll do the red one, complete it, issue the bonds, come to you. I'm asking you to hold the 75%. So like in year three, I come for the yellow one. We'll start, and then we'll issue those bonds and then the blue one. We may go 1, 2, 3, and issue all three at one time, but asking for some period of time to ramp it through.
Any, any other questions from?
One other.
Just clarify one, so what you're saying is you would commit to, in that five-year period, you would have applied for all three IRB issues?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes. The other, the, oh, sorry.
I just, which would mean essentially you would have to have the projects done in the five-year period.
We would have to have them, okay.
I mean, just the way IRBs work, you wouldn't want to issue bonds until your project was complete because then you've lopped off part of the 10-year abatement.
So if I, if I started 1A, which is how they designated. So if I started 1A, which is how they designated the red one, and then finished it and closed it, say we finish it in 18 months. And then I came in and asked for the second bond, 1B. That's starting, and I'd finish it in 18 months. And then I'm at three years. Let's go to four years. And then I come back in year five and start, and start the blue one. It may take another year. I'm in the year six, but it's three separate bonds. Is that, can we make that work?
Yeah, the application would happen within five years, not necessarily the last.
Correct. Yes, correct. And then we'd close on each bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
I knew I was making a mess.
Would that be binding future councils to that at that point?
No, because it'd be in a development agreement at this point, right?
Yeah.
It'll be written into the development agreement that's approved now for the incentive, for the incentive.
Right, but with tax abatement, we have to do a public hearing on each one. So, no, it would be in the development agreement, but technically, you would still have to hold a public hearing and still have to make a decision on the tax abatement at that point. So technically, no, it would not be binding on the council, but, I mean, we'd never.
It would be, I'd.
Yeah, it would be.
They could vote a different way.
So it wouldn't be guaranteed to Dave that he would get them, because it would be non-binding to the council at that?
Yeah.
Future councils.
So the other question, and this is overall the 78. I'd like you to consider, and this is kind of just abroad. We're in the southwest area of growth. I have heard that maybe the discussion from the council is that a tax abatement's for residential perhaps ought to start heading down. Maybe no longer 75, maybe some other numbers atop. I'd like you to encourage you to look closely at this area, since you've designated it as a kind of a primary of growth, and perhaps put it on your map, and maybe stay it at 75. We're the first ones in there, but there's so much potential. I mean, that road plan's cool. I just think that's, that's just going to really do what you've thought you want to do in that area. And so if you could consider that when you're working on your economic, the map, I'd appreciate that, or do you have any questions on that policy idea?
Well, no, I mean, this would be incentivizing growth in the area where we say we want growth, right? I mean, that would be aligned with our strategic.
Yeah, that's kind of the intent of the policy, is to try to create the activity that we're trying to drive via our comprehensive plan, our strategic plans.
Any other questions?
No question. I mean, it's consistent with the plan. It's consistent in terms of use. It's consistent in terms of the ask. I think you've got to work out the specifics of the development agreement, and that's for y'all to do.
And I didn't, I heard the engineers. I mean, we're probably the guys right in front that'll test the right-of-way acquisition, and we're more than happy to, I'm going to speak for them, to donate it. I mean, we want, that can only help us. Will help the development, not just our development, the whole area development, so I think that would be great. Does the excise tax sound okay to, you think you might move to CID or transportation?
To me, it makes sense that it would become part of that pool. I mean, it's kind of the idea, right? It's.
Contribute.
Excise tax is there to.
It's, if I could, just a reminder, on the excise tax, within the excise tax ordinance, there's a provision for the council to grant this application. You have to ask for it.
Right.
You can ask, hey, could this excise tax go toward this arterial road? And the requirement are is that, essentially, the city was going to be doing it anyway. So it's got to be in the CIP.
Yeah.
At the time, so it's kind of headed that direction, I think, as inclusion, at least the first steps, right-of-way acquisition or whatever. So that, it's a little bit outside of the economic incentives policy, but maybe we ought to incorporate it with the changes we're doing to make sure that gets incorporated as part of the policy.
And one other thing on the benefit district, any problems with that or questions? Because we, I mean, we have one landowner, so we could do the petition. We have the construction cost estimate. We just do a development agreement, and I'd like to be back here two weeks or the first weekend, or the first meeting in November. Because we think financing will be before, we'll have financing, this is a $30 million construction, and the road's about seven, and the water line's a million-ish, which we can't put in the benefit district, which is not, we're not doing that. But we'd like to have our stuff ready to go and start work this year on the road.
Okay.
Dave, just a heads up. We, I think you're one of the first applications that comes up. We have a bond origination fee now. It's in the fee resolution.
I saw it.
So that's something to.
Hey, I live here. I like it. I'm the only guy that goes and pays for my truck at the county, and they go, well, your taxes go up because of the Soto. And I'm like, that's awesome. Go, what is this guy's problem? No, I, yeah, I saw, that's fine. Yep, yep.
And Mayor, if I, I don't want to confuse the issue or prolong the discussion, but in the packet, there is this letter from September, this concept of, you know, actually looking forward past this first phase and for the whole. Do you want to address that at all at this time, or just?
Well, that is the, that was the idea of me, Mike, saying, when you go to the economic development.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, Patrick and I, we've talked, I mean, this is a little complicated, and I don't, we don't need complicated.
Okay.
I think it's more partnership, hand in hand. I mean, this is where you want to grow. We're here. We're committed. But I think if the tax abatement went down below 60, or 75%, you never know. It just, it is exactly what you say it is. It's an incentive. This is putting a little alcohol in the fuel to get this thing running. And then, I agree with policy, someday down the road, you should kind of slow down residential incentives. No other community does it. But look what we've got because we did. I think we got, we're getting where we want to be, or that's Dave personally. But we need housing to support a lot of our retail establishments and our businesses we got here. So you've kind of done the right job, and I know you might have to trim it back, but I'm asking here, and Mike, that was specific, but let's, if you would focus on that specifically.
Okay, very good.
Treat it that way.
Thank you.
As always, yeah.
You mentioned water, water can, this is water seven.
Right.
And is there any expectation that they'll provide the infrastructure that they need to provide to support?
Yeah, we've talked to them. I just gave them the check to do the water study. I sent an email to Mike, because he asked me to, whenever I heard the, well, I don't know. My friends at Geiger are taking more water than we thought. And I'm like, really? So anyway, they have their issues, and we've shared them. I'm friends with Alan and Colin down there. We talk. But they're, they've got the study. To your point, councilman, they, the study was like 6,500. They're going to pay for 2,500, because it has to look at their system expansion, and we're going to pay for the four for our part. So they know they got to do stuff, but they said they could supply us in this phase. After that, we need help. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, one final thing, because you mentioned water sewer. We, you guys gave, we've worked an agreement out, and when sewer comes for the 95th Street, we're ready to hook on. But this will actually go down to the SRL sewer, and we're all set there. So, good. Thank you. Thanks.
Item five, executive session for personnel.
Rob has the template.
I'll make a motion that we recess into executive session at 7:38 to discuss the Administrator Annual Performance Evaluation Pursuant to Exemption Non-Elected Personnel Provided For by KSA 754319B1. With the open meeting resuming in the city council chambers at 7:52.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, we'll be back.
Brandon.
Those are horrible.
Yeah, you, yeah, you just, you gave them to me, so I just put them on Rick's desk.
Do you mind Phil Thompson filling out that?
Yeah.
And whenever his place.
Got to fill out or something. Oh, uh.
Who made the motion?
I was actually, I was going to text you today.
Do you need to do that tonight? Well, I usually just do it all tomorrow. It's easier. Do you need to run them out? That's the question. I usually just type it up. Usually scan it, type it, send it out.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I usually scan it, type it, because, is Kevin on any of these?
Yeah, but what I was going to do is send them these, and then he'll sign, and everything will be completed.
Yeah, no, I was just going to send it during.
Same side.
My D B, whatever the software is.
Yeah, so if you just, but I think if you just do this, or wait, wherever you put in, like, who made the motion.
Yeah. So on those, I think, I think on one of them, someone has to memorize it, I think.
Oh, really?
I can't, I can't, yeah, I have someone else's name. Yeah, I can do the rest of this.
Well, it's because of the code.
Yeah, I usually type, that way I have a digital copy of it.
So my thoughts, when I give bond councils.
Yeah.
They'll sign it, and then you'll have everything. They'll scan it all back to you. It's all signed.
Yeah, but I can, so.
So this, one of you, if you want, you just do this one, send it electronically, and then the rest. I'm just afraid we're going to have a bunch of duplication.
Well, no, if we, if I send it out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant, if you just send this one thing out, like that?
Can I just send the whole thing? That way for me, does that make sense? That way I'm not missing anything. So what I was going to do was send, submit digitally, Kevin, digital. That's how I, it's what I, somebody who I did this.
So I guess my question is, you know, we already had everybody sign all these, so is it just going in the track?
Once, once Kevin signs it, yeah. Because they take it and they have to put everything together anyways.
So are you going to scan all these and send it?
Yeah, I'm going to scan it. Yeah, I'm going to scan. So those emails you got from me this morning, that Kevin signed, same process. That's what happens. If that's okay. That, because to me, it's easier. I just pull it down. It's there. And then in case somebody loses it, or it's because it's happened before, where I sent it to him, and then I don't know what happened. They lost it. So I have to just copy of it.
So will you have the mayor re-sign all this stuff?
Nope. So what will happen is, I'll take this. I'll scan it. And then whatever, whatever signature you missed, I'll go through and double-check, because sometimes the mayor will miss a signature. And then what happens is on this section here, or not this section, excuse me. This section here, which is the amended meeting minutes, right, or it's like so-and-so made a motion. I just fill that out digitally, and then I send it off to Kevin. He signs it. They have a copy. I have a copy, and it's ours there. And I do the same thing with those two.
So my plan is each time, like, I'll assemble everything that needs signature, so, yeah.
Okay.
And then I'll just, instead of like before, I was just giving you the.
Yeah, I don't care.
But now this.
Either one is fine. Yeah, either one's fine with me. It doesn't bother me one way or the other. Yeah, I usually, I usually get this, if I need to send it to, if you're here, I just give it to you. But because Kevin's not here, I'd rather keep track of it, and then I could just send it off to him. He signs it. Comes back to me. He gets a copy. I get a copy. Andy gets a copy. And that way, it's there already. So we don't have to send it back and forth, because what I've, we've lost it before. I don't know what.
Can I see those for a second?
Yeah, take it.
See it.
Since we changed.
Yeah, go for it.
The last night, they were just going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, it's still supposed to, it's still supposed to. At what point are you going to do the, the, the?
I'm concerned with Mike.
Yeah.
I think he's good with that.
Yeah, I think he's good.
Is this being a perfect, I mean, I have to track this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll wait for the rest of this year.
Plus, I mean, you're going to have to have, you have to, when you're going to plan, you have to show. And I would assume that's still important, so what, that was. It just has a, it's a future. Everybody wants to.
We don't have to.
So I know that we can, our future.
First thing he says is, and then second question, second question, second is, go back to this.
This is going to be.
Of course, yeah.
There's your question.
So.
Brandon, I pulled all the flags. It's all something.
It's okay.
Ones that still need.
It's, it's.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be interesting.
I also, I appreciate the matter, because what they're talking about is you want.
Okay.
Okay, we can get you a devil.
Preuse tax, you have to.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Same.
They can't come back.
Yeah, but that's not what they came with.
They are continuing.
We love it.
But.
It's, the idea is that it's an older, and they do that.
Or.
And then they're going to, it's going to be, to smoke the boundaries, and say, it's coming early. And then they can, you know, it's coming.
It's, you have to.
We can play it.
We're supposed to come there.
Just because.
We're trying to. We had a great. We're really, we're the sidewalks on both sides, and we put my horses on the pasture out front. I really agree with that. Kind of like.
But then you'd be allergic to, in turning over.
I know, I can't, I can't even be mad about it. I don't, I'm not going to really handle it.
No, I'm still living there.
I'm still living there.
Yeah, in that transition.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
But I think then it becomes much more, to the rest of the development. It's like, oh, you're serious about the investment. The time is trying to, it's not, all for the future.
So if you, you, here's another city, then you might consider.
It's all one that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, too. The bagel and the protractor.
Some people, they're looking at his work, they're looking at the office. The closer you are to. I used to. Develop. They're all about the hard house office.
And you could all sort of say, same thing.
We could kind of. So, or if you want to drive. I don't know if you're having any.
No. You can, you can relate.
Yeah. People, he's like. I'm going to. It's, you. So this is the.
I want it right now.
So was it 34, 560, 43, 45, 43, 560? 43, 560. So, you know, they, that group's, even very, pretty, they, it's, hey, you know, it's, I mean, where it's from. And in fact, that, I know that's.
That, see.
That's my one. You know, you know about person. And what we found about when we did that, so we can. So you made. Atomic add.
And you got to.
Galloway's power.
Read that number.
From now until.
It's 10.
It's a.
Very small.
Until you know, you know, by. North.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I thought all along.
Save two, right, one of them is. Also the K-ten.
Yeah.
It's changing. That'll make that actually. Yeah. Right. Our neighbors. Right, just cause they don't have.
You're right. Right, I, I, yeah, I think they've got someone writing this.
Yeah.
I have no idea how.
Right, which hasn't even, I mean, apparently. Right, yeah, they, yeah, cause they've got, you want a three now, six ton. I know, they're always.
It's why I'm not gonna go to the ground.
Otherwise, we had some ground there, that bridge.
We got, we got one name. Oh, there you go, you have your right, now you come down.
That's right.
I don't know if the videos or individual videos are showing.
You got it, you digitally, can you? I emailed it.
All right, it's seven fifty-two, we'll call the meeting back into regular session.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a. Raise representing cost of living as well as performance in the amount of five percent. For our city administrator, Mike Brungard, retroactive back to the start of his contract date of twenty-twenty.
June fifteenth.
It's June which?
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
We have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second, a discussion roll call, please.
Lane.
Oh, yes.
Hana Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mac Moran.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Advisory reports, city administrator.
Uh, nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, city attorney.
Nothing for me.
City planner, not here, city engineer.
My update is, um, Mac Nating should start next week on the overlay program.
Okay.
And wrap that up probably within about four weeks.
Okay. All right. Assistant city administrator.
Just two things, one, um, the Riverfest Monument sign, um, they should be mobilizing on Monday. I wanted to personally thank Joe, Joe found about a hundred and what, seventy yards of dirt to.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, to get that project started, that was one thing we were missing, um, and then the other only thing I have is, um, I left it at your seat. The DeSoto Fine Arts and Crafts Show is next week, next Friday through Sunday, um, here at City Hall. Um, you guys approved a donation, or, sorry, a funding request from the Public Art Fund for that, so I just. For you guys to recognize it and understand and looking forward to the show, lots of hard work going into that. Okay, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Brandon, Danny, anything for the group tonight?
Uh, uh, yeah, I wanna thank Rob for sending me the pictures of the water plant when I was ill and couldn't see it. And appreciate that very, very much, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Victoria.
Uh, just a reminder, I won't be here at the next meeting. Yes.
Rob, anything for the group?
Yeah, I had a couple of things, but I can't remember one of them, one, just, I've been communicating with Mike, even Joe, a little bit about. Potential speeding coming off the Windup Bridge, we've had constant issues with that as far as looking into speed, um, sir, something. Even if it's working with Leavenworth County, um, something, so I think. Mike said the next steps are kinda getting mo- speed monitored to see if it's actually up there. Um, if there's enough there, like I suggest, I tend to say if you're gonna put the trailer out there, leave the display off to where. And wait for about a week to where people forget about it.
Yeah.
Um, to try and get more accurate, thing on that. I had something else related to something like that and I cannot remember what it is right off. Joe, don't we have a speed feed, didn't we put a permanent speed feedback sign right there off the bridge at, unwind up?
Yeah, as you come, just as you get off the bridge. And there is a sign south of the bridge or north of the bridge.
Does it records any speeds or just, is it just feedback?
It's just feedback, it flashes for which you know which speed it.
Which speed?
There is a speed on the sign on the north side of the bridge, or a sign that says, you know, reduce speed ahead.
I was just curious if that feedback sign recorded any speed data.
I thought, I think, you know, what we got was just something that indicates your speed and flashes to hopefully get you to pay attention.
Okay, I do remember it, cause I made notes on it and actually a couple of other things, apparently we have a stray cat issue. In the downtown area, over by Cause Coffee and things like that, where there are substantial amounts of stray cats and they are breeding. So like if you drive by, there's a house that says five kittens, if somebody wants them, those are not ones that they had, those are from strays. Um, so I've mentioned that to Mike and Brandon as well, but apparently it's pretty substantial to where one of the residents is. About ready to start taking their rifle to them, because it's that many. Uh, so that's one, uh, and then. The getting off of K-ten as you go to Lex, or go to ninety-fifth street on Lexington. The lane where the left lane becomes a left turn only, having better signage that that lane is a left turn only and ending on you. Cause routinely seeing people in that left lane coming off the stoplight and then wanting to, all of a sudden going, oh crap, and trying to move to the right and. So maybe some better signage in that area, so that's what I had.
Okay. Kevin?
I have had a business meeting come up and it's unlikely I will be able to attend the meeting on the sixteenth as well. So I'll be in California and I'm not sure what my schedule is with the time difference, so I would say we better plan on I won't be available.
Okay.
Um, we won't have a quorum.
Yep, that will.
Uh, it is, uh.
About three.
We need to have four.
Four.
Yeah. Maybe we need to look at a reschedule.
Yeah, we could send out a, cause Wednesday or Tuesday, Mondays might be court.
When are you leaving on your trip?
Wednesday.
So it couldn't be a Wednesday night either then?
No.
Have to move.
There's, there shouldn't be, there won't be planning commission Tuesday, I can send out a calendar thing and we can find a date that works.
Pretty sure we can't go without any action or a meeting, I mean, I would think, I don't know exactly what. I guess we'll look, see what's on that agenda.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a meeting without any, you know, votes needing to be taken.
We can't.
Oh, no, we can't do that.
Can't even convene.
Start a meeting.
Right.
We just have to cancel the meeting.
Right.
Could we do Tuesday, with a Tuesday, would that work for?
But early, congratulations.
Tuesday evening work, maybe?
Tuesday would work.
Yeah.
I, I know that won't work for me, that'd be in Kansas City until like seven. That's for work.
Yeah.
Beyond wedding related.
You see what's in the council chamber.
Following Thursday?
Can you do Tuesday?
I can do Tuesday.
Yeah, so.
Cause we, we only need one of you.
Yeah.
To be able to go and reschedule.
Mm-hmm. There is a fire district meeting that Tuesday, but.
School board candidate forums, but that doesn't impact you guys, it's.
Okay. At the fourteenth, I could talk to the fire district, see if they, see if they could potentially have their meeting at their station that day. But we can also just do this digitally and schedule the meeting, just find a date that makes sense. That's probably the easiest way, I'll put together. Monday or Tuesday would be potential days that could work. For everybody?
Mon- mon- Monday would not.
Monday, okay.
Candidate form, okay, so maybe we'll look at Tuesday.
The fourteenth and I guess worst case, we could probably meet in the senior center. I.
No, we're, we're in the senior.
Oh, you're in the senior center, okay. Got it, okay. Let me, uh, let me talk to the fire district and see if we can't bump them back to their fire station that day and then I'll get back to you. Let me shoot an email off real fast, but. Or, or what are you doing at that time, could you be on line during?
I would be in a shop that has zero signal. So I mean, I could, I probably just won't talk and you won't see it or anything.
I was just joking. Bad idea.
It's okay, I already thought about canceling it a hundred different times, so.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna be part of that. Cost of that.
All right. Let's work something out.
I'll send an email, we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll get something figured out. Yeah, the fourteenth, I think, is what we're looking at, but I'll, let me do some digging, cause I gotta kick the fire district out. Give me, give me a date to get an email out and we'll figure something.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I got. All right. I don't think I got anything tonight, so.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.